First we'll take roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger?
Here.
Mr. Lawler?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Okay, we have six tonight.
We have six, okay. Uh, first item, score sheet and summary from, uh, April 5th meeting. We need a motion to accept.
Elliott, motion to accept.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. Eyes have it, six zero. Uh, we have no committee reports. So we go to the first item, which is PC 07-21. Jackie Lindsay from the, um, southeast quadrant of Chambers Road and Scottdale Drive.
So this petition, you may recall at the, uh, March public hearing Jacob presented it to you. Um, but I will be presenting the staff recommendation. Um, this is PC 07-21 Jackie Lindsay, which is a request for an amended C8 planned commercial district procedure for a .39 acre site located in the southeast quadrant of Chambers Road and Scottdale Drive. Uh, you can see the site is located in North County, um, on the south side of Chambers Road. Um, it is, um, a bit east of, of Interstate 170. Um, you can see from the aerial that's surrounded by a lot of residential, um, residentially developed properties. So here is the site as it exists now. The structure on the site was originally developed as a service station with gas pumps. Um, at some point, the gas pumps were removed and you used the site to rent trucks and trailers. Um, they ceased those operations a few years ago. It has been vacant since. Um, the petitioner, the new owner would like to amend the C8 district to permit a small community oriented convenience store. And at public hearing, she indicated her proposed hours of operation were Monday through Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. On Sundays, 8:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So here's the site plan. You can see she would like to retain the existing building, uh, make some repairs and re-strike the existing pavement. There are no gas pumps proposed, um, for this convenience store. She also indicated she would install fencing along the southern and eastern property lines as well as remove the overhead doors, um, to the service base in order to give the property a bit more of a residential appearance. Um, so the planning department would make some recommendations to revise the site plan a bit. We would recommend the closure of one of the entrances on each east road frontage. One of the entrances on Chambers, preferably the one, um, towards the intersection with Scottdale Drive and, and the same for the first curb cut on Scottdale Drive. Additionally, staff would recommend that the signage permitted on the site be monument in style only. We would recommend that the fencing along the southern and eastern property lines be decorative and site proof in order to shield the use from the abutting, uh, residentially zone properties. Lighting standards on the site should be 16 feet in height maximum. This is the, uh, maximum height for lighting standards in residentially zone districts. And we feel that it would be appropriate to have that same limitation on the site. Unless we would, uh, require the review of architectural elevations to ensure high quality materiality on the facades as well as some new fenestration to just sort of increase the appeal of the building. You may recall from public hearing on the western side facing Scottdale Drive, there are two, um, two restrooms with exterior entrances. And we would, uh, request that those be closed off and either reappeared to be accessed from the interior or, or another location in the building. But we would not permit, um, exterior entrances to the restrooms. So the staff is recommending approval of this request. Uh, this site was zoned C8 in 1970, but it had been used commercially as a service station since the 50s before the zoning ordinance was lifted. Uh, staff feels that the C8 procedure is appropriate at this location to continue to allow this commission and the county council to craft site specific conditions of development. Um, the staff feels that as a use, a community oriented convenience store is acceptable. Um, we would prohibit the sale of alcohol at this site, which was, uh, one of the main concerns at public hearing, as you may recall. When it was originally advertised, it was advertised to request the range of C2 shopping district permitted uses. Uh, but due to the size of the site, staff would recommend, and we've crafted the conditions of development to permit a C store and the range of C1 neighborhood business district uses as permitted uses, which are, are the lowest intensity, uh, range of commercial uses. Crafted to cause, uh, to trigger a new public hearing if the building was ever demolished or replaced or, um, expanded. Uh, like I mentioned, we would recommend architectural review of this, of, um, for this element as well as monument style signage. And additionally, some new landscaping would be required on the site. Uh, buffer zones along where the adjacent properties are zoned are residential and as well as some front yard landscaping along the two road frontages. So based on these, um, considerations, the staff is recommending approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need a motion.
Elliott, I make a motion for approval.
Sneed, I'll second. I'll second it.
Discussion.
Yes, I have one. Uh, we said no alcohol sales permitted at this location.
That's correct.
What's the difference between this one and the one on 367 and Redmond?
So.
We, we, uh, think we're going to allow that one.
No, that, the one on Lusher?
Yeah.
Was, was also crafted to prohibit the sale of alcohol.
Okay, we did do that. Okay, very good. Now, he said that he would come back and, and ask for a permit, but we still can enforce no sales of alcohol, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing no one, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it, six zero. And we'll go on to the petitions from, uh, April 19th. First one is PC 08-21 Adam and Michelle Drogi.
So this afternoon, we are bringing this to you as a letter of recommendation. PC 08-21 Adam and Michelle Drogi requesting a zoning change from C2 to R5 on a 0.26 acre site located at the southeast side of South Broadway Street, approximately 85 feet northeast of Mann Street and the north side of Mann Street. As you can see, the site is located in South St. Louis County. It is in the Lima area and it is surrounded by, um, mixed uses of residential and, um, some commercial and industrial. Um, again, here you can see, uh, more close up on the site. It contains a residential structure with a small commercial structure at the front. Next, we have the outboundary survey. The, um, the petitioner is proposing to use the existing one and a half story building as a two family residence. And then they would like to convert the small commercial building into a single family residence, like a studio type apartment. So, um, staff's recommendation is the approval of the R6 zoning, um, in lieu of the R5. As, um, the site was developed as a single family structure pre-1965 with the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Um, the site was granted non-conforming use. At the public hearing, the petitioner proposed to bring the site into zoning compliance so that he could use it for three residences. Um, on the map, you could see that there were adjacent sites zoned R5, C2, and R6A. Um, most recently to, you can see to the north of our site, the designation of R6A, that formerly was zoned C2. Um, staff is of the opinion that the R5 zoning is not appropriate for this site because it, um, only allows for one residence. The, we feel that the R6 5,000 square foot resident district, um, could permit three residences on the site and that it's a more appropriate zoning designation. And, um, again, we're recommending that the site be rezoned to the R6 residence district in lieu of the R5.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need a motion.
I'm a motion for approval.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I, I have, uh, I, I guess I'm a little confused because I thought I read the, uh, material on this and, uh, and I thought it had in there that they would have to have paving on all parking and drive areas. Is that correct?
That is true. For occupancy, they would need to pave the drive and access.
And what about, because there's a lot of gravel on that? And are they going to pave entire gravelled area?
So, um, I don't know exactly, but because this is not a request for a planned district, we can't put specific conditions of development on this property, but they would have to meet all of the building code and occupancy requirements from public works.
So, so basically they could keep, uh, most of that gravel out there. And, and the plan that you just put up on the screen, Mel, it indicated, uh, that there is going to be gravel in, on the very top side of that drawing. And then it's got something. Am I looking at it correctly, brick?
Right, so what's, this was an ASBILT survey that they submitted for public hearing. Um, this isn't necessarily the proposed conditions, but they would have to provide one parking space for each of these dwelling units and they would all be located somewhere where it's, it's gravel right now, but they would have to pave it.
Ju- just one parking spot?
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling.
Per dwelling.
Three, ultimately three.
Right.
And we have no architectural review.
I'm a little concerned how that's gonna look because we don't have any way of making, I mean, we would have a hard time approving any kind of residential without knowledge of that. And since we don't know, I guess I'll withdraw my second.
And I'll withdraw my motion then.
Melissa, we have no, uh, architectural review, correct?
That's right. They would have to adhere to the, all the building code requirements and the requirements of the R6. Um.
But you're saying that, you're, you're saying that that would, that, that would then, uh, cause them to remove all the gravel? Is that, is that a condition there?
It's not a condition we've written, but it would be part of the regulations from the Department of Public Works that prior to getting three occupancy permits for these units, they would need to provide parking on a paved surface.
Okay, but I guess my point is, Mel, there's a lot more gravel. And I think we're trying to, especially in this area, trying to get this improved community built. We've, we've done a lot of, you know, other building in that area. And it's all been done in a way that you would typically expect, uh, residential work to be done. And I have a concern that this will not be done that way.
Would it be beneficial for, uh, staff to go to the petitioner to hold it, to hold the, to hold the petition for additional information regarding what they are willing to do in terms of the driveway situation? If that is the primary concern driving the commission, um, you know, we can chat with them and, and sort of see what, you know, to give us a more clear understanding of, of the degree of, of pavement that they're willing to do for this site. Would, is that something that, would that allay the, the commission's concerns?
I think I'd be satisfied going back to them and finding out. Since, since we can't, we can't necessarily, uh, put, put those kind of restrictions on it. We still want to know what that's gonna look like.
We will, we will have, we can definitely have, um, more information regarding the degree of gravel, um, removal and, and pavement for your next meeting.
That'd be great.
Is that agreeable?
It's okay with me.
With that?
Yes, it's all right with me, Steve Lawler.
I'll make a motion to hold.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion. Steve, do you have something? Okay, uh, we have a motion to hold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Lawler, yes. Okay, eyes have it, uh, and we have a hold. So, uh, PC 09-21 was postponed. But we've got PC 10-21 Telegraph in Tansburger.
So this is a request, excuse me, this is PC 10-21 Telegraph and Tansburger LLC, which is a request for a change in zoning from the C2 shopping district to the C8 planned commercial district for a 0.51 acre site located in the southeast quadrant of Telegraph Road and Tansburger Drive. I'm sorry, Wayne, did you say something?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, so this is, this site is located in South County in the community of Oakville. You can see it is outlined on this aerial in red. Uh, south of the site is the Dearburg Shopping Plaza. And I would note that Tansburger Drive, um, which is the northern prop, which abuts the northern property line, is a private road. So you can see the site here, uh, has the existing structure, the former, uh, dry cleaning, um, operation, which has been vacant for several years now. Um, and abutting the site to the east is a single family residence. Across Tansburger Drive to the north is, is the vacant fire station. Um, and as I mentioned, to the south is, uh, a fast food restaurant and the Dearburgs', um, shopping plaza. So the, uh, plan that was submitted at public hearing here shows a new roughly 1,000 square foot Starbucks restaurant with a drive-through. At, at public hearing, the petitioner indicated there would be no indoor sales. Um, there would be drive-through sales and there is an exterior window. So here you can see the menu board with some stacking behind it. And then at this corner of the building is the pedestrian pickup window. Uh, and then cars, if you're doing a drive-through order, would circulate around to the other side of the building where the drive-through pickup window is. So there are 14 parking spaces shown on the site. Um, and as you may remember from public hearing, there, there's some significant topography changes on this site. So in order to develop the building and the parking, um, there is a retaining wall. You can see shaded in gray, um, which is 10 feet tall at its maximum height. Um, but it's, it's necessary to, to level out the site. The staff is making a couple of recommendations for modifications to the site plan, um, based on what we heard at public hearing from, from residents and from this commission. We have required protective bollards adjacent to the pedestrian pickup window to, to create another level of separation from the pedestrians and, um, the drive-through customers. Additionally, along the eastern property line, uh, staff would recommend that the fence above, the fence would be located on top of the retaining wall. We are recommending that fence be made decorative and site-proof in order to shield the abutting residences, residents from headlights. They did submit some preliminary architectural elevations at public hearing. Um, staff is generally, um, pleased with these elevations, but would like a little more, um, fenestration, some more windows decorative or, or real on all faces of the building. And on the western elevation where the building faces Telegraph Road, staff would support, um, the utilization of an art piece or a mural or some sort of, um, you know, art piece to, to provide a little more visual appeal to the site. So we are making a recommendation for approval this evening. Um, this site has been zoned commercially, um, so the, the commercial zoning is not in question. Uh, we do feel that the C8 and commercial district procedure is appropriate because it, we can ensure the compatibility with the surrounding land uses, um, as well as some flexibility in the site design. I would note that this, um, a drive-through restaurant is a conditional use in the C2, but because of the size of the site and some of the other constraints I've, I've mentioned, the C8 is, um, is a more appropriate procedure for development of this site. Uh, staff does feel that this use is consistent with the land use and development pattern in this area along Telegraph Road, which is a major, um, commercial arterial in South County and is developed with a variety of commercial uses, um, many utilizing a, a drive-through, um, a drive-through development. So as I mentioned, um, we recommended some specific conditions of development, including the site-proof fencing on the eastern property line, um, as well as some enhanced landscaping throughout the site to generally bring up the appeal as well as review of detailed architectural elevations. As I said, we are recommending approval of this request.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we need a motion.
I make a motion.
Anyone? Okay, Lou? We have a second?
My second.
Okay, discussion. Anyone?
I, yes, this is Sneed. I, I have a couple of things. Um, when I read through that, uh, write-up, the report, it appeared that, uh, uh, there was mention of high quality material, brick and stone, that's being required. Is that correct? Up to 20%?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so, so we would see that on all, all elevations?
So we are asking that all the facades be treated, you know, equally with, um, you know, a certain percentage of fenestration and a certain percentage of, um, brick or stone. But the west elevation is specifically where we had recommended, uh, a mural or art piece.
Sure, sure. That, that, that was mentioned as well. That's correct. But it doesn't say brick and stone, I don't think. It says high quality material. And I'm not quite sure what that means.
Um, basically, I'd have, let me pull out my report, but either, you know, brick or brick, um, oh my gosh, what is it called?
Brick veneers.
Brick veneer, thank you Jacob. Um, but they basically, um, the elevations would, would probably be a process of, you know, resubmital and then eventually we would bring to this commission, um, architectural elevations we think you would be satisfied with. Do you have a specific, um, which, is that what you'd like to see, Mr. Sneed?
Well, no, I, I, I just want to make sure what high quality material means.
I think that, um, one of the benefits of writing it as approved is, you know, the petitioner is able, gives the petitioner some leeway in sort of providing us and the commission sort of an explanation of why a material may be appropriate. You know, this site, the use of, um, of a wood, partially wood exterior, I think is, um, of a high quality, especially if you've seen some of the newer ones of these structures that are being constructed, like the newest one, I think is down on Hampton in the city of St. Louis. Um, I think what, when we write those conditions, what we, what we don't want to see are things like metal panels, um, things that would wear or, or look out of place in our region. Um, but the, the high quality material gives us as well as the petitioner some flexibility in nailing that down through the review process.
Okay, uh, in, in the very beginning of that report, it talked about, uh, a particular type of signage. And then later on, it said monument. So is there a, uh, a conflict in what they said there?
On the preliminary plan, um, they have shown a pylon sign, a pole sign, but the staff is recommending a monument sign.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's see. And, and what, has anything been accomplished with the neighbors for using the private drive?
So there, the right Tansburger is a private street. Records of the agreements are not, I don't think we've found them, but as you may recall, this, this same property was the res, the subject of another petition in early 2020. And from what we understand from, I think, that petitioner was, they believe this property, um, does have rights to the private street. But I don't believe this petitioner is opting to engage in a, in a maintenance agreement.
Okay, so, so we're kind of leaving, we're trying to leaving the residents, without an answer to their, you know, the only real question they had about the safety and, and use of that street and, and cocaine for, for the use of that street.
Right, so any maintenance agreement would be an agreement.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Sneed.
No, no, I, I'm just concerned, nothing will get accomplished for the residents there. If that's, if that's the case.
Well, I, I think the issue, the issue here is also the, the old adjoining firehouse has equal access to, uh, Tansburger as well. So I don't think you put the whole thing on, uh, this commercial site, whether it's a, uh, Starbucks or whether it's, uh, a pizza place.
But Wayne, but Wayne, I guess, uh, the bottom line here is that, uh, there, there is no agreement. And without that, there, the residents have to pay to maintain the street themselves. And all we're doing is taking the word of a previous petitioner that there's a right. And, and I, I think that needs to be resolved before we, the position that it's okay to build this and let them use that street.
Well, the question is, 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 do they, do the residents actually have a, an agreement in place among themselves?
I don't know.
I believe they do not.
I think they need to resolve.
They don't have any maintenance agreements that I know of because I believe they, you know, they, when there's a pothole, they go out and buy asphalt and they fill it themselves. They don't contract out with anyone for maintenance. Um, I know they mentioned they don't, you know, they don't contract with anyone for, um, snow plowing either.
Okay, how can we though, put the burden on one business if the people already there don't have an agreement?
Exactly.
Well, I don't know, uh, you mean putting a burden on, on, on this, this developer here? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, if we, if we go ahead and withhold this or make a contingent upon him signing into something, yet he's the only one signed into it, then he's on the hook for maintenance on the, on the.
Yeah, I agree, but it doesn't sound like anybody really knows what's there. It's, I mean, we, we're, we're, we don't have any facts to substantiate what the situation is there. We do know that it's always been an issue when they develop that ground.
Okay, but what are our rights and, and our, our, let's say our duty as a commissioner to approve or, or disprove this with the facts on the table that we know to be present at this time?
Well, I, I, I don't have a good answer for that. I'd say let's get the facts.
Well, then I would make a motion that we put a hold on it until we find out exactly how the maintenance of Tansburger is gonna go.
I mean, I, I think at best. He would be liable for the. Half of Tansburger that would adjoin this property. Certainly nothing more than that.
Or or if they really had total ownership and total responsibility. They could say you can't use it at all.
We didn't find that, did we, Melissa?
I believe the only thing we've found is there used to be an alleyway on the. Eastern side of this lot and that was vacated, but I don't believe we've ever found. Of any agreements or really much documentation for Tansburger Drive generally.
How do we determine that it's a private drive?
Because we know that the county department of transportation has not accepted it, nor do they maintain it.
So mainly they use the main road as opposed to Tanbong.
So on this plan, they are showing access from Telegraph Road. This one on the bottom is a two way. Commercial entrance exit on Telegraph Road. And then the exit they are showing on Tansburger is a left only. Tansburger is a dead end street. But they are showing an exit only, left only, so they are not trying to drive any traffic, you know, towards Tansburger Drive.
How many approximately feet is that once you make the turn on Tansburger?
Back to Telegraph Road?
Yeah.
I maybe it's probably less than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Just give or take was a hundred foot, fifty?
I'd say, yeah, eighty feet, a hundred feet, maybe.
Okay, and then what percentage of Tansburger Drive is eighty feet? How long is Tansburger and Tans?
I think there are. It might be. Twelve houses deep, twenty twenty four houses total, twelve on each side. I would, I I can pull out the map, but actually, let's go back.
It appears that it's ten houses on each side. So this is at the very end of Tansburger and the point that Mr. Hildinger was making is that in general, typically, we would require one half of the right of way be made, you know, be improved by any petitioner when they do something of similar similar to this. So, you know, they are showing sidewalk, they are putting a sidewalk along the Tansburger Drive frontage. However, it is a, you know, the, we don't necessarily have the ability to require. That, you know, this petitioner maintained the entirety of Tansburger or.
We go with what you with what you said, half, one half of the eighty foot.
One half of their right of their of their frontage along the right of way.
Yeah, which would be eighty foot, basically, since they can't make a right hand turn, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So if they if they agree to maintain that eighty foot.
I'm I'm just not sure that the the county can require anything on a private drive.
Well, you know, a question would be, question would be if if an individual home on Tansburger was sold. There's nothing in place that would require that new owner to maintain their portion of the street. If there's no agreement in place.
Correct.
I get back to my original argument, then why are we, why don't we just say nobody has to maintain it?
You know, we could, we could.
Do we know that, Wayne?
What's that?
I says, do we know there's no agreement?
That was my impression.
One solution or one.
Do you know different?
One thing to move this along this evening could be that we could, staff could be directed to put in a condition of. Maintenance of one half of the right of way along Tansburger Drive. And then during that time between now and the next meeting, when we bring to you your letter of recommendation. Staff can further confer with the petitioner to to that they have a short window to go to and and try to find some of, you know, really. Show us that they've done their due diligence on this and we can, prior to your adoption of your letter of recommendation at your next meeting. You know, bring this to you, but they, you know, we can keep it moving along. And then at that point, if the commission is still not. You can revise your your letter of recommendation at that point.
I just go back to square one. I mean, if county has a course ratio on this, how can you force anybody to be with them?
Well, that would then be a, this would give us the opportunity to spend a couple, you know, these questions. It what it sounds like to me at this point is that we need to do a little bit more. We need to discuss the the Tansburger. You know, the Tansburger bit, just a little bit more and we could bring to you additional information at your next meeting regarding that.
You know, the reason I bring this up is more than just them using a road that they don't want to help pay for. It's the biggest concern that we heard at public hearing. Is that that's where these kids walk all the time. I know they're putting a sidewalk in. There's going to be traffic coming out of there, I can tell you in the morning. It's the best time to get a hot cup of coffee. And they're and and the residents were very concerned about the amount of traffic. Coming out of there when their kids were walking up there to get the school bus and standing up there. Now, they are putting a sidewalk, I give them kudos for that. But we are putting those kids a little at risk with having that traffic coming out of a place that their largest. Business is in the morning because it's going inbound and and that's what will be coming out.
Now, I that is to from just my understanding of that concern, that concern is slightly different than the Tansburger than the Tansburger. Maintenance issue. You know, the design of the they, when they design these left, these sort of left turnout onlys, there is sort of. It is sort of curved in such a way that the that the motorist is is sort of, they're forced to see in the direction so that they can sort of see to the right and to the left. So, you know, I think that. At that point, I'm not, you know, that that concern, I think, is I can come back with more information about maintenance of Tansburger. But I think that the the concern about any access onto Tansburger is a slightly different question.
Well, currently there is an opening there to.
Yes.
Correct?
On the the previous, the previous use had had access since it's onto Tansburger. Since it was, you know, for for a significant period of time, so it has had access onto Tansburger the entire time that it's been a a commercial use.
I guess I'm under the assumption that the previous owner agreed to help maintain that portion of the road.
Mel, are you still?
That I recall that from the from PC O four twenty, the Domino's petition that. They had indicated the dry cleaner operator did pay some towards maintenance, but I don't know, I don't know how that was actually implemented, but. I remember that as well, that. The dry cleaner wasn't helped in some sort of maintenance.
So I guess the the new owner. Basically, isn't as nice or kind.
I don't know if they've been approached in the same way by the residents and we we have not, you know. Not indicated to them that it's something they would need to opt into because ultimately it is an agreement between the property owners. It's not really. The county's agreement to require for this private road.
So this is something we could at least ask the new owner if they would be interested. And in an agreement with the the residents on that street as the previous owner did.
I think that.
Do we have a, do we have a role of trying to put in place a private agreement?
That is, I think, a that's where my sort of concern comes in is that if the agreement doesn't exist and the agreement is merely a sort of a. Something that just exists, yes, an ad hoc whatever or agreement. It we don't as the county, because it because Mel keeps coming back, it is a private agreement, so. We can't force private property to then enter into another private agreement. So I think that that's where. That has been some concern is that that we haven't seen through two petitions at this point to be able for anyone to reasonably locate for us a paper. Document that that binds all of these properties together and ultimately binds this property. So. That is, you know.
Up to the resident then to talk to the the new owner.
In a as a private agreement, yes.
It's kind of out of our hands.
In the the firehouse, the old firehouse, which is across the street from this, is in private hands. And has been for several years. So I think there's an equal obligation. As there would be for everyone else living on this street.
But Wayne, how do you enforce that? I mean.
Why don't think you can you can enforce a. A private, a private agreement or or what's done on a private street? I don't think the county can do that.
Basically ask the owners to. Conversate the residents, I guess.
But what at what risk do we put the commission? By by using this, I don't know, force or whatever you want to call it or.
There is no force.
Just, oh, well, if we don't approve this, and that's our underlying reason because they didn't enter into a maintenance agreement.
I mean, I don't think San Luis County highways can come down. Tansburger and put conditions. On that street.
Okay, but.
Since it's not a county street.
Okay, but but getting back to the place of the commission. If they meet all the. For us to vote this up or down, and we voted up, yeah, some of the residents are going to be upset. But I, you know. I for one think we should just go ahead and approve it if we feel that it's going to work and. Basically, the residents will have to meet with the owner.
Is it possible that we approve it with? I guess. Some type of. Sidebar or or. Action asking that the owner at least meet and discuss this with the residents. Is that possible?
Well, I think Jacob offered a. A scenario to do that.
F could staff can take this if if the if the will of the commission this evening is to vote for approval. Staff can over pre between now and your next meeting, when you will see this again, staff can draft. You know, a condition that sort of meets what the goal is, which is either. We've done it, we we did it even for the preserve in which we we required a meeting between after school district, MoDOT. County DOT about that school crossing there across McKenzie. So we have had, we have done in the recent past conditions where we do state that prior to occupancy, we need some sort of evidence or some sort of something showing that you have attempted due diligence to. You know, to in that case, to produce a a crossing that was very child friendly. In a case like this, to show that they have done all of their due diligence to find any sort of legal document that that binds this property. And having and showing that they've had some sort of meeting or 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 showing, you know, something. That they have attempted to 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 address this concern prior to staff bringing it to you for site development plan approval at some point in the future.
I'd agree with that.
About the best way to go about it.
Is that agreeable with the first and second? Who had the first? On the motion?
I have Mr. Cunningham down as the first on this motion.
Who's that agreeable with you?
It is.
And the second?
I had Mr. Ballard as the second.
Bill, is that agreeable?
Sure, I mean, yeah. I think that's, I was muted. I'm sorry, yes.
I mean, that still leaves it open, Bill.
So staff between, oh, I'm sorry.
Which bill are you speaking to, Wayne?
Bill Sneed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were speaking with Bill. I'm sorry.
Does that, is that okay with you?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a reasonable approach to.
Okay, so we move it forward and. We still wait for an answer. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, six zero. And we'll move on to letters for approval. First is PC O three dash twenty one, Dan Wagner.
I believe that one we acted on at the executive meeting on the nineteenth of April.
Want to do them both together then?
I think I think the commission voted to forward the letter already to the county.
Correct.
Those are already done?
Yeah, so we just, we're on the correspondence items.
Okay, we'll just go correspondence and. First is is the only one is two ninety two dash eighty seven Shell Oil.
So today we're bringing, of course, communication dated April, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. From Austin Craddock requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance one three seven seven five as amended. PC two nine two eight seven Shell Oil Company requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance. On a nineteen point eight acre site that is located on the north side of Butler Hill Road, approximately four hundred feet west of Interstate fifty five. Here you can see the parcel outlined in red. It is located in South St. Louis County. In the Butler Hill. Shopping Center. And it is in a planned commercial district at Butler Hill and I fifty five. Austin Craddock is requesting amendments to the C eight ordinance. We are recommending approval of the request to amend the C eight ordinance. Permitted uses to allow for two fast food restaurants. Currently, it allows for a fast food restaurant. The site in question has been developed as a restaurant for a very long time. A vacant Waffle House building sits on the site right now. The developer is proposing a Starbucks restaurant with a drive through and this does seem to be compatible with. Current and existing uses of the development. And it wouldn't compromise the integrity of the other businesses. In the shopping center. They did provide us with a site plan. You can see that they are proposing to demolish. The existing structure and construct a, you know, pretty small. Starbucks building that's drive through only and it is to the directly to the west. There is another restaurant with the drive through. So it is similar to the adjacent property. And, you know, of course, with the development of the site, there would be, you know, landscaping requirements and things like that, so it. Would look very nice. It would definitely look nicer than a. So it would look very nice. It would definitely look nicer than a vacant, vacant structure that's there right now. And so again, we are recommending approval to amend the state ordinance permitted uses to allow for two fast food restaurants in the Butler Hill Shopping Center.
Okay, we need a motion. Anyone?
I make a motion for approval.
Discussion. No one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have a six zero, and we've got one site plan. PC fifteen dash twenty, MBR Management.
Well, that's actually was acted on at your last meeting. What I have this evening is, yes, is PC thirty-one and thirty-two Flower and Fendler. So the commission may remember that this is the Bowles Crossing subdivision, which is located on Bowles, on Bowles Avenue. So this is, we've gone through the PEU process. This is their preliminary plat. It meets all of the requirements of the PEU ordinance. It does, as you, as you may remember, this does have the creek to the, you know, there to the left of your screen and common ground. It does have a branch road. And this is, this does meet the, the requirements of the PEU ordinance as you recommended be approved. The next sheet, I think of more interest is the landscaping. They've done a pretty good job on the landscaping. They're along Bowles Avenue, nicely densely landscaped with, using native grasses, native trees, native shrubs. Additionally, each lot does have at least three trees per lot, which is well in excess of what the subdivision ordinance, the typical subdivision ordinance, which the county owner typically requires one per lot, but this commission did require three per lot, and they were, they did meet that. Additionally, you can see that they are, are showing trees and shrubs to replace tree mass that is lost along the property line. And it is the next, additionally, in the next slide, which shows the, the sort of the other portion of it there, that, that plateau drive, that private drive easement, they do fill in the areas where the, the tree mass ends up being lost. And then in this final slide, also for approval tonight, this is the, the monument style sign. One of your conditions for, for development was to create a, a monument style sign that is a little bit more rustic in nature to sort of meet the, the sort of general aesthetics of the area. And we thought that they succeeded with this. It's very simple. It's a, it's a, just a nice brick sort of tower with a, with a small, with a small placard coming off. Simple, rustic, and we thought that that met the, the spirit and the, the letter of your recommend, of your recommended of your conditions. So with that, we are recommending approval this evening.
Okay, we need a motion?
Make a motion.
Anyone?
Oh, Sneed, I'll second.
Discussion. No one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have a six zero. Our next public hearing is when?
So we are not anticipating at this time, a May public hearing. We are anticipating having another executive meeting on Monday, May twenty-fourth. So you will be hearing from Dory or Evelyn to pull you for that meeting. But looking a little bit further into the future, we have now received, and some of you may be familiar with the redevelopment of the MetLife campus on Tesson Ferry. We have received an application and preliminary site plans for a proposal called Tesson Ridge. Basically, they're proposing to reuse the existing MetLife office building for some luxury apartments, as well as developing new commercial tests on Ferry Road, and then some villas and some single-family residences throughout the rest of the site. So we are anticipating that to be a mid-June public hearing, but you will hear from us about that as well.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, and we adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thanks, Melissa.
You too.